...have forty thousand people, which is like four times the population of Cocoa Beach. And not all the population eleven thousand Cocoa Beach vote. Anyway.
Wow.
I wanted to take a minute to describe the form of government that Cocoa Beach has. It's described in the city charter, which is our guiding document like the Bible, as a strong manager, league council, form of government comprised of five elected officials. That's why we have an election every year. The mayor is a commissioner as well with duties to chair meetings, city meetings, and ceremonially represent the city. The manager is a professional and is the only employee that the city commission has control over hiring and dismissing. And runs the daily operations in the city. And the city commission does not direct anyone individually. They don't direct the employees. They only vote on policy and the city manager carries out that policy. So if you have any issues or expectations otherwise, just so you know, completely courteous and refrain from clapping or disruptive outbursts because time for admitting at the end of the meeting, the public will be asked, be available to ask questions of candidates. The format will be, will address the candidates in the seat of order starting with two and then one. I may reverse that if it looks like seat two, Ms. Byron gets all the questions first and maybe jump in the middle. Each will have two minutes to introduce themselves describing however they choose, how long they've lived here, their city advocacy, and why they're running for election, how long maybe that they've been in Cocoa Beach. Each will have three minutes to answer specific questions. Each will have two minutes to give a concluding statement. I want to introduce the timer, Ms. Rutino-Wyler here to help us out and let them stay on track.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And also Juan Rodriguez from Space Coast Daily is going to video for us in front row here. Ms. Wyler will indicate to them with the half a minute left of their time with yellow flag and a red one when it's time to protest.
This doesn't work.
So I have to tell you that we are really fortunate in this community, whatever your inclinations are. This city is nonpartisan politically, but I don't know if that always proves it out when you get out in the field, but we are very fortunate to have very talented candidates for this election. We have three engineers. You want to hold up your hands.
Wow.
One from NASA, one from Space Force, and one from Works for Defense contractor.
Well, me too. I'm an engineer as well.
And we have a retired marine engineer. And a construction contractor. And two of the candidates are named Cocoa Beach.
Wow.
Not an engineer. He's thankful.
We're great.
We have in seat two, Melissa Huey Byron and Keith Capizzi are running against each other for seat two. Then we have seat four, Josh Jackson and Skip Williams. Skip is running for his last term that he's eligible to run for election for the commission. And Don Haynes and Jeremy Hutchinson. So without further ado, I'll try and give us some really good questions that will answer all the things you wanted to know about. So first of all, we'll just go in the order of candidates. If you would introduce yourselves, you have two minutes to give your introductory statement.
All right, and you may begin now.
Now. I'm Melissa Huey Byron. I'm running for seat two for city commission. I am running because I want to give back to the city. I've worked for the city for over nine years. I retired. I've worked for the Chamber of Powers as a president and CEO. I have owned my own business as well as worked for a corporation. I feel that I understand what the city has been going through and what is going through. And I would have the honor of being the second generation to be elected to the city commission. My mother was the city commissioner in the seventies and eighties, so I learned from her the value of service. And I believe that I have something to give back to the city and I want to. I want to also, I'm running on three things, to preserve, promote, and provide. To preserve our neighborhoods, our ocean, our environment, and to protect the environment and the beaches and clean up of the lagoon, and then to provide efficient and effective services to the citizens of Cocoa Beach.
Half time.
Thank you. I am looking for your votes. I am not taking donations. I self-funded because I feel like that's probably a better thing to do in a small community. We all have to live here after the election and we're all going to be friends, so I figured that that's the best way to do it. And so I was fortunate enough to have some PTO after I retired, and so I'm using that. This is my vacation. So thank you all for coming. I also want to thank the Space Coast Realtors and the Hotel Motel Association of Cocoa Beach for endorsing me.
All right, thank you very much. And you may begin.
Hello, everybody. I'm Keith Capizzi. Just a regular guy. Grew up here. I've lived here my entire life. I grew up less fortunate. I didn't have a lot of money. I grew up in Eighth Street, and back then in the eighties, it was, it was not the best area. All growing up, I had to figure out ways to make money and to try to, try to better myself in life because my parents didn't have that to give to me. So fast forward to my adult life, I started working on tugboats when I was twenty years old, all through the way, just education after education after education, going to get my captain's license, AB Unlimited, four thousand horsepower and near. So just, I'm just used to problem solving. So my whole job as an engineer was to find the problem and to fix it. And all growing up, my, my problem was I didn't have money.
Half time.
So I had to figure out how are we, how am I going to be financially stable? And, you know, looking at the, at the city debt, it concerns me. We do have, we have good debt and we have bad debt. So that was one of my motivating factors for, if you look at the debt chart for the past nine years, we've gone on a steady increase of debt. We're now at forty-four million dollars in debt, which is, which concerns me. Within five years, I predict, we'll be closer to sixty million in debt. So I would like to, my, my goal is to try to keep us at least net zero on that debt, at least keep us even and figure out ways that we can make money. I've proposed different ideas. I don't want to build another parking garage because there's going to be another one being built. So we don't need three parking garages downtown. I just don't feel it's the best use of government money. There's other ways that we can make more money with the money that we'd be spending. Again, my, my goal, I'm not the best speaker as well, I don't know if you noticed.
That's two minutes.
But my goal is to, is to do good for Cocoa Beach.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Jackson, you may begin now.
All right, good morning, and thank you guys for being here. This is exciting to see such a, a group here, even some of our younger citizens of Cocoa Beach, so I love this. Excited for the folks that are up here as well. I think you have a really phenomenal group of candidates. Speaking about myself, my wife is here, Jitana, thank you for being here. A little bit about us, we grew up in Myrtle Beach, so not here in Cocoa Beach, but we got to see what a future looks like that we don't want for Cocoa Beach. We've moved here, we've fallen in love with this hometown, and we're really excited to raise our voice here. But we watched in Myrtle Beach where big money, big infrastructure turned a hometown beach town into a commercialized tourist town. It doesn't happen with bad intentions, it happens step by step. And we joined the race for commission as, as part of making sure, being part of the solution to make sure that we stay Cocoa Beach, that this is a hometown beach town that we love, support. And so as an engineer, as a program manager, I'm used to taking competing requirements and priorities, turning them into a goal, a set of goals and priorities that a team can work towards, and I'd like to bring that experience to Cocoa Beach to bear for the benefit of the community and for our family. So thank you so much.
All right, excellent. All right, Mr. Williams, you may begin now.
Janice, as a point of order, according to sunshine law, there's two other commissioners in the room, and, you know, I either have to crap my language so that I don't say anything that's not already currently part of the public record, or I'd have to ask Commissioner Miller and Willis to step out of the room. I'll pass.
Skip, I think that you can introduce yourself without violating the sunshine, so please, please introduce yourself.
Well, it's hard to go into the priorities of the city, so I'll, I'll just steer away from that. I think that most people have seen my track record and understand my priorities.
Well, that, that's your choice. I would just wanted to say that Skip is a NASA engineer, and you can read from his literature. I don't violate.
Half time.
I'm saying this. He's been here a long time. He grew up in Indian River County and has been a big supporter of Cocoa Beach. His wife is here, she'd like to be a servant for this, on our conversation, I wouldn't prepare to speak on anybody's behalf. No introduction, but Skip has a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering and has been on the mission for a long time. And I think there are two issues that he's always supported, the police and fire services for the city, the utilities for there to be safe drinking water, sewer, things the residents can't provide for themselves, and he's been a big supporter of the height and density issues.
That's time.
And I don't, I've never accepted any campaign contributions because I never want to have that thought cross my mind when it's a gray area making a decision, and I could go either way and then that thought crossed my mind, well, they gave me money. So never have, never will, so save your money.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. All right, Mr. Hutchinson, you may begin now.
Great. I'm an engineer number four in the Anchorman, so I'll use props. So a few little thoughts to remember to be wise. So Jeremy Hutchinson, running for seat five, first time politician and a problem solver, fiscally conservative problem solver, so that's a takeaway. Put the American flag up here because it doesn't get any more grassroots than this. And we're at the core level of every seat has two candidates, so it gives you guys choices as the constituents to be able to choose your preferred candidate. The yellow and black is Georgia Tech, so I went to Georgia Tech, grew up in Atlanta. My wife's also an engineer for Georgia Tech, the program manager at NASA, I worked for Defense Director in Melbourne. Moved here in 2000. We're both, like I said, engineers, got our graduate degrees since we've been working the area. But like I said, I'm a problem solver. I'm not a politician, so I just know how to solve problems, much like Josh, program side, making decisions on requirements and the cost impacts of that. So I think that's good, good industry experience I can leverage. And then Cocoa Beach first. I understand I work for you guys. I'm going to be a commissioner, I'm working for you, I'm not going to be, I don't have any, any interest with developers.
Half time.
The residents of that matter, so I fully realize that. And then right here, you'll see a silhouette of two dogs. I know it's kind of a humorous one, but talking to Skip, apparently he ran across the lady that was asking about me, and she said she was going to vote for me because I had two labs, so. I'm a national relative to two dogs. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Haynes, you may begin now.
My name is Don Haynes. I'd like to say I've been a resident of Cocoa Beach for fifty-two years, but in a way, it's really a lot more than that because I grew up in Winsoka at Rhode Island, my mom, single mom, and every summer since 1959, she sent my twin brother and I down here to live with my aunt and uncle. And I liked it so much that when I graduated from high school, I moved here. In other than two years in the military overseas, I've been here. I graduated from FIT in 1980. I went to work for a construction company, started my own company in 1984 as a, mostly a single-family custom home builder. But I was fortunate enough to build a Cocoa Beach post office and the same people up in One and Nims. As you know, I've been on the Board of Adjustments for twenty-three years, chairman the last eleven. I'm a member of Kiwanis for the last thirty years, twice president. And also something that's very, very dear to me is Freedom Seven Senior Center. I've been on the director there for over twenty years. And for the future of Cocoa Beach, I really.
Half time.
I really like what we've been doing so far. And I look forward to trying to assist this, you know, like I know Janice mentioned that we can't get involved too much with the construction and design, or at least put my input into the new city hall. Hopefully it'll be downtown. And I like what the city has done with infrastructure. As far as the stormwater, they solved that problem with a boat crashed into the bridge and the sewer. I think in two hours, they stopped the leak and had it corrected. So that's what I want to continue, how we're doing. We're financially, it's a triple-A rated city. I know we have a lot of debt, but, you know, for a city this size, I don't think it's that much. But I'm not a frequent, a spender. And like Jeremy, I'm a problem solver. I'm a one-man company for thirty-eight years, so you can imagine in the construction industry, I, we're, an accountant's hat, a builder's hat, a bank hat, everything. And I just enjoy living here and I want to continue. Oh, my wife, my wife is back there. We have three daughters and seven grandchildren. Thank you.
All right, and that's time. Excellent.
You just never know, but you'll get to deal with. So I have spoken with Commissioner Mike Miller and Commissioner Carolyn Willis. They were so kind to step out while Commissioner Candidate Skip Williams answers a couple of questions.
Isn't this going to be recorded?
It is. Well, I'm just trying to make everything happy.
It's all out of sunshine anyways, I think, but.
Yeah, so.
The stipulation is you have to have somebody from the city clerk's office here to take notes. The recording by Space Coast Daily doesn't make up for that.
In addition, you have to have a public notice that this bill, that this meeting is being run, and so it can be posted so everyone knows that it's a public meeting. However, Mr. Miller is not running for reelection.
But we have two more commission meetings between now and the election.
Okay, so this has become a little complicated in that, you know, just because you never know how things will turn out. Sunshine, Florida sunshine is a very big deal, so Skip, I'll, I'll let you answer all the questions last.
Okay.
You'll get the point. Okay, so Melissa, starting with you, what do you feel, and having worked for the city until recently, what do you feel is the most critical single challenge to the city right now and will face over the next few years?
The most critical is, is the lagoon. And then the next critical is our infrastructure. Infrastructure is very important for the city, and, and, you know, there's a lot of talk about debt. Let's talk about debt. Twenty-five million dollars of that debt is for our public utilities, our sewer plant, which is paid for by the users. Fifteen million of that debt is for the police station, the fire station, and the new fire truck. The fire station debt will, will fall off because it will pay it off in less than ten years. And then four million of it is the CRA for the parking garage, which pays for itself and then some. It makes money. So, and we're at a triple-A rating of the city, so our credit is good. And there's good, good credit and good, good borrowing and bad borrowing. Well, it makes sense when you're looking at money at seven percent that these loans are less than 2.5 percent. So you, you can make more money by putting your money somewhere else. And also municipalities have to borrow money so they can go ahead and build the assets that you need and use them while they're paying for it. So it is infrastructure, which would be stormwater improvements in our sewer plant, which we want to continue to keep update. It is state-of-the-art. And my mother also helped build that, that sewer plant. I have a picture of it, it's in our bathroom. And then the stormwater.
Half time.
The stormwater needs to be captured. We have also issues in the city where there are some locations that are flooding. And they flooded just last, last week when we had the hurricane come through. The water was rising, but because of the millions of dollars that the past commission has put into it, we're able to handle it. The sewer plant can handle over six million gallons of sewage and wastewater a day. We are running at nine million. So that shows you where the problems come in. We're going to keep adding to it to make sure that we can take care of it. But on average, we run at three million. But they have added generators that don't need to be manned because they automatically kick on. That was bought through money from FEMA, that they gave us money to go ahead and secure our lift stations. Brightwaters experienced some flooding, but nothing like they had back in Irma and Matthew and, you know, when it started coming into their houses. So that was taken care of. So the infrastructure, and when you, when you do the infrastructure, you in turn protect the lagoon. Anything we can keep out of the lagoon and utilize through reclaimed water, that's better for ours. And then we're having the new camping coming in. There's thirty-six million dollars that is going to be paid for out of the half-cent tax that voters voted for to clean up the lagoon. They're going to do a state-of-the-art camping around Ski Island, that's not up there, the original.
That's time.
Anyway, infrastructure.
Can I borrow a pen or a pencil from somebody?
Sure.
Thank you. Wasn't super prepared, so whenever.
Okay, and you may begin now.
Okay, so I agree with her as far as infrastructure, I would believe is probably our number one. Like she said, we have a lot of debt and some of it's good debt, and I do agree that water treatment plant, great debt. We make, we make money off it. Twenty, I think twenty-eight million-ish around total for it, twenty-six. It's, it's good debt, you make money. I'm not into spending money just to spend it because you get a good deal on it. You can only get so much stuff on sale until your credit card runs out or you, or you can't afford to pay it. Every single year, I encourage you guys to look at the debt chart. Every single year, it has gone up and up and up. There's never been in the last nine years, just a flat line. If I could just see a flat line, that would be great. That being said, Airbnbs, Airbnbs are a big problem right now. It's not, I don't have a problem with Airbnbs if they're run right and they're respectful to their neighbors and all that. Actually, you know, they can be, they do increase our tax base, I'll, I'll say that. But nobody should have to live next to a hotel with crazy people next door every single day. The lagoon, I, I agree, but I will say the lagoon right now with, with the dredging and what we've done, absolutely the best I've seen it since I was ten years old. I've been, I've been cruising these canals every day for my whole life. And the fact that this, this last two years, I could see the ground.
Half time.
Which is amazing, amazing. And I would say, and originally, I was against voting on the half-cent tax for Save the Lagoon because I thought, you know what, we give our government money and they waste it, we'll never see anything good with it. And I'm happy to say that I'm, I'm very happy at task because the lagoon is, is in excellent shape. So mainly infrastructure. If we build something, which I don't understand, if we knew that the city hall was going to need to be replaced ten years ago, why didn't we put away a fund, or maybe we did, I don't know, but why didn't we put away a fund to pay for it so that after ten years when we need it, we could pay it outright and not have to take a loan? But now we're going to do, what, three and a half, four and a half percent interest loan? That's, that's three million dollars or so in, in interest just in the next, I think, I want to say five to six years? So if we're going to build stuff, let's, let's save up to fix it or replace it later. Why do we build things? We're great at building things, but why do we not? Why do we not maintain things? We are not very good at maintaining things. So I would say infrastructure and maintenance is a great way to go and also take care of the Airbnbs.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Jackson, you may begin now.
All right. I think we do have a number of challenges, none of which are insurmountable by our community. But one of the major things that any community needs is a vision. And I think we have to continue to communicate and effectively follow our vision. Growing up, professionally within the Navy, one of the things that our admirals would impress on us is a philosophy of not no change, but no change. And it sounds funny when you hear it out loud, but when you see it on paper, the idea is not NO change, but KNOW change. And as a community, we love what we are. We love that we're a hometown, beach town, and we don't want to see that change. But effectively, the sun and the salt, time and technology, so many things drive us to have to update, refresh, so that we can stay vibrant and healthy as a community. And so in that, we have to have a common understanding of who we are and what we are as a community so that we can make the infrastructure decisions, the money raising decisions, and each of the things that aren't associated with money or infrastructure, so we can pursue common outcomes that keep Cocoa Beach healthy and vibrant. So in doing that, we have tools like comprehensive plan that we can continue to update. We need to pull more folks, and I love that you guys are here, but we need to pull more folks at all age levels into our commission meetings, into our planning meetings, our Board of Adjustment meetings, so that we can hear the public voice.
Half time.
I think that is critical for us getting the infrastructure right, for getting the finances right, the budget, the revenue, and all those things. So I think one of our chief challenges is to have a community vision for Cocoa Beach for the long run.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Williams.
I thought we were going to wait last.
Yeah, he's going to go last.
Okay, we're agreed on that?
Well, the commissioners in that big room.
I guess you're last. You know, I feel rude kicking out two of my fellow commissioners, but, you know, headlines for ethics violation against Commissioner Vice Mayor Skip Williams for my talk at a public meeting that wasn't advertised and had no representative of the city clerk wouldn't make very good headlines, especially this close to an election. My priorities from Cocoa Beach have always been police, fire, and EMS, maintaining our infrastructure. You know, we've done a lot with infrastructure. It's not sexy, you know, you may not hear all about it, but we do have, as has been spoken before, state-of-the-art sewer system. We've sliplined over sixty-six percent of our sewer lines, and we already have another twelve million dollars bank for, for slipline and more. So that, all those old clay pipes are going to be reinforced. And then maintaining our recreational amenities. You know, some people say, why do we pay for that golf course? I don't play golf. I don't want to pay for the golf course. Well, I don't have any kids in school. I pay for the schools and I don't have any, I don't have any problem paying for schools. But then, you know, same thing with the tennis courts, skate park, the pool. But, you know, nobody wants to get rid of the beaches, which would be hard to do. But all those amenities have a, you can't really put a price on them, but it brings people to Cocoa Beach.
Half time.
And when people come to Cocoa Beach, you know, to visit and stuff, you may take your friends out twice a year to play golf, they loved it, great views, everything, so you paid for it all year long. But, you know, some people play two, three times a week. People use that pool that are healthier than they'd ever be because that pool's there for them to swim in and get their exercise, especially the older adults. So I think all those amenities make this community what it is. I think we should maintain those, you know, and we need to maintain our environment, clean air, clean water, drinking water for not only us but our fish and our birds and everything else. And I just, you know, I follow up by, by saying, as far as the things that we've built and we've done, I understand, yeah, your parents always teach you, save your money first and then buy, but sometimes as people are finding out now, they're saving their money and their money's being eroded because they didn't buy earlier because the interest rates went up and the construction costs went up, so there's balance there. So I believe we do need a new small city hall downtown in the same location as the one there is, but not as big, just to house the face of the city people that, you know, you need to have easy access to. And the rest of the folks that do all the behind-the-scenes work that have moved down to Public Works couldn't stay down there.
That's time. All right, Mr. Hutchinson, you may begin.
So I'm going to throw the, the obvious question out there, is I think.
Can you bring them back in?
Is the two referendums. So if you're not aware, there's two referendums on the ballot to lower the threshold for changing height and density. height and density from 5-0 to 4-1. So effectively, it makes it easier, uh, to get things approved. And I personally, I'm, I'm going to vote no, so I want to keep it at 5-0. I think we went through years of that, uh, negotiation with citizens. It was a popular vote back in the early, uh, ten, fifteen years ago. Uh, so I don't think it's time to change it. I'm not saying I'm against development. I understand that the challenge with revenue, uh, tax revenue and revenue base, but I think it's so dear and such a critical element of Cocoa Beach lifestyle and the Cocoa Beach community that we can have compromise and maintain a 5-0 vote. We've established a separate variance process that has a lower threshold, four to one. So if we make this change, it's on the referendum, it'll effectively negate. No one will, will need to go through that variance process. And there was, if you were watching Thursday night, uh, Skip and his commissioners voted 5-0 to get a, what I think is a very good project. So it is not meaning we're not going to have growth, we're not going to support development. It just means it's got to get a lot of stakeholder buy-in. So I think that's key because that's going to be a, a, a big revenue driver that a lot of folks are talking for, uh, expanding projects and funding capital things, but I think, uh, that's a, a big one that we've got to get nailed down. Obviously, it's a popular vote, so I have, you know, if I'm a commissioner, even though I personally am going to vote no on it, uh, if it passes, you know, obviously I'll adhere to that, but I at least want to give you insight to my opinion on, on what that
Halftime.
If we do lower that to a four to one threshold, so.
You've got a minute in high flow.
Uh, okay, the next, so, on the, yeah, so on the city hall, I'm a, I'm a fan of maybe smaller. Um, personally, I would like to see that, this is, again, just a, I, I talked about being a problem solver. I'd love to see that down at, at the Public Works Building. They have a nice facility down there. Uh, I know it's not the centerpiece of the city, but, um, I look at Friday Fest and I don't want to look at a city hall that nobody's in when I'm having beer on Friday Fest. I'd like to have splash pads, uh, farmer's market stalls. I think it'd be a lot more utilized. Have an insurance way so it's still a city, uh, reception area, uh, but I think the functioning city hall could be better served further away from the coast, less hurricane risk, um, and over by the Public Works facility. The, uh, let's see, what else? Topics? I think, oh, I'm good.
All right, thank you very much.
I'll see you by time.
Okay, Mr. Hayes, you may begin.
The one thing I said earlier was that I really appreciate with the city commissioners that run, they've set the next, us next commissioners up to be in good shape, uh, as far as debt goes. But my thing is, Cocoa Beach, if you look around, it's really becoming a world-class city. We get two and a half million visitors a year. Uh, the city commission solved the year B and B problem, I think, with the registrations of them. It's going to really control them a lot better. But I think our city hall should be something we're all proud of. Doesn't have to be, you know, eighteen thousand square feet like Cape Canaveral, probably half that size. And that would be great with the amphitheater and the park right in the middle of town. That's what people are used to seeing if you go into towns, is a beautiful city hall. I'm all for that. As far as, uh, the, the infrastructure, I think everybody's addressed it well. I remember twenty years ago, Chuck Billius took me through the sewer plant that, at the time, they were the number one plant in the state, and they've done that. And the reason why they're in debt is, not because the city wants to spend money, but a lot of it is federal and state mandates. They have to upgrade their sewer plant. Now we're only running, what, seventy percent? So we handle our problems very well. The slip lining of the sewer pipes, another great idea. Uh, I listened to Dawson Walker, just one little problem at the end of Bahama, they had the overflow of it, they're putting in a seawall. I mean, they just react so good to it. This Public Works Department is phenomenal, I think. And it's really not that much money when you think about it. So the city's in great shape. I want to continue that. The other thing I like about this town, my older brother lives across the street from
Halftime.
And he had a heart attack. The response of the city saved his life. So that's what I like about it. We feel safe. We just hired two new paramedics, two new police officers. We're in very good shape as far as that goes. But the good thing about it is we're going to have three major projects coming online. Probably in the next three years, they'll be completed. That's going to bring in an awful lot of revenue. And from talking to certain people, we probably won't have to raise, raise our taxes. I know they raised it this year a little bit, it's probably going to cost the average guy a hundred to two hundred dollars. That's not a lot of money for the services we get. Uh, the golf course, all the recreation. When I was a kid, recreation is not supposed to be, you know, that's something that's like a supplying sewer, I feel. It, you've got to have it for a city, especially a city of our caliber. This is a great little town. That's all, and I'm going to keep it that way. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to the all great answers that are going to overlap a couple of, um, questions I, I had here on paper. But, um, I want to address, sort of, finding a couple of things that you all mentioned. Okay. So, um, having mentioned that business as a revenue driver in Cocoa Beach, two-point-five million visitors, and a sixteen percent tax increase, um, for the residents. Well, we're, you know, business people here. I think over the years, you know, people said, oh, we need to do this to promote business, to promote business. Well, here's the big business that moved into Cocoa Beach recently, vacation rentals. Over eleven hundred of them in the city now, competing with the hotel rooms. So the city has a community redevelopment agency, a main street program, all these things to help business. With the introduction of vacation rentals, it's the first time that the resident property owners have had this phenomenal jump in their property values, where many of them are taking advantage of it, selling and getting out of Dodge. So I would like to know what you all think about that issue of business being the driver for Cocoa Beach. What about the residents? What do you, what is, we talked about residents, but what do you, what specifically besides recreation is being done for residents?
Okay.
Well, we'll start with Don. He'll start the other.
All right, Mr. Hayes.
I was going to cheat on there, I didn't. As far as the Airbnb goes, I know a person who actually took hers off the market. She used to be a fellow commissioner, Adrian Dillon, many years ago. And the reason why is, right now, because of the Airbnbs, the rentals have gone up so much. She says I can make almost as much money without the hassle of an Airbnb. And let these new, uh, city ordinances come in to slow those Airbnbs down, where people have to be a hundred percent legal, they're going to lose their homestead, the insurance rates for them. So it's not, it may not, that eleven hundred number, I don't know if that's totally believable because that comes from both Airbnb and VRBO. So some of the people are listed on both. There's probably really seven or eight hundred of them. And the other thing with the other, the hotels that we have and all the growth we have, just think if we didn't have it. When I was a young kid, we had, uh, right next door, the AMP store. That's, and then Brassy's, and then the library, or right here in the post office in this area. So now we've got two great Publix's and a Winn-Dixie. So because of all that growth in the commercial, and believe me, they pay it. Those bed taxes add up to a lot of money. They pay a lot of money for this. As far as the, the idea of A1A is our commercial area, but when you get back into Cocoa Isles and up there behind the Catholic church and down by the country club, it is beautiful out there. At night, it's peaceful, it's quiet. So I, I like what they're doing in the city and having all these opportunities. Look at the great restaurants. We wouldn't have all these great restaurants if we didn't have these hotels and tourists coming into town. So it's good and bad, and people have owned the land, they can't leave it empty forever. But I, I just see nothing but good things happening in this town. Thank you.
Halftime. All right. And you're finished?
Yeah.
All right. Just wanted to make sure I'm not shortchanging you.
No.
Mr. Hutchinson.
All right. So, um, Don has a lot more experience with the, the local businesses. Obviously, he's been here, I can't match his third-year experience, but I, what I hear from my neighbors and, and who I want to represent, uh, is residents do matter. I'm not trying to steal your tagline, but I, I, variant of that is Cocoa Beach first because if you look down the East Coast, we have a tremendous space opportunity, so there's a lot of working class folks here that actually have day jobs. We don't have to rely a hundred percent on, uh, tourism or Airbnbs, and that's, we're getting that infiltration. But if you look basically Vero Beach South, there is no towns that are, you know, white-collar workers that are making good salaries that, we have to work through town. Same thing north. It's a lot of hotels, that, the hospitality industry. So here with, with the space industry and the aerospace in Melbourne, uh, I think it is, it can be funded. I think the business side of it looks at the, the tax base. Oh, there's this big opportunity to get more money from the businesses. So I think it's a balance, but I think definitely the residents, we can focus on maintaining residential community. Um, and then like I said, it's, it's, it's a balancing act. I don't, I think we don't, we want to adhere to the, the density and the height. I think that's the key element of it, is we're okay with businesses, it's just we want to refresh them, we want to bigger, bring in, hire in hotels that charge a higher premium, that bring in better folks, uh, that are, that are not going to trash the town, not going to trash our beaches, but, uh, I, I certainly, the residents are a key player in this as well, I think, more so than a lot of the beach towns up and down the East Coast.
All right. Did you make that?
Please skip you, Commissioner Williams, that, that you can answer last, and I'll ask you the next question, please. And then, uh, Commissioner Miller and Wallace will only have to go once.
All right, so Mr. Jackson, you may begin.
All right.
Whenever you're ready.
Um, so I think, to start off with your high-level question of, uh, my perspective on business in Cocoa Beach. So our charter states that we are a resort community, right? That's part of what we are, and resort is dependent on businesses. So we have a lot of folks that are local residents and, uh, business owners. That could be hotels, that could be, um, condos, restaurants, shops, things like that. That's a vibrant and important part of our community. So I, I value and prize our businesses, and I think, um, that requires a voice, that requires consideration. But I think in balance with that are our residents, right? And one of the things that our residents are feeling pain on, and it came up in the introduction, is the Airbnbs. Uh, it's a challenge. It's a challenge that the state has handed us by making the laws they did in twenty-eleven, twenty-fourteen. Uh, it's a challenge that some of the other communities got lucky on. They had some stuff on the books, they were dependent on specific laws. We didn't have those because we were dependent on zoning, right? Zoning has been around for a long time, it's very reasonable expectation. I don't think any mistakes were made there, but it's left us with a challenge. I think some of the steps we're taking now, in terms of putting in, uh, tighter restrictions, higher fees, things like that, are going to start making a step in the right direction. But we've got a lot of learning to do. And if any of you were at the commission meeting or the commission workshop on Airbnbs or, or short-term vacation rentals
Halftime.
There were, there were two really interesting folks that were there for me. Uh, one of them is a father, a resident, who owns his own Airbnbs as neighbors to himself. And he said, look, I care about all these same problems. I do have the advantage or disadvantage of having invested in and brought these properties up to code, but I don't want people keeping my kids up at night. They've got to go to school. I don't want people trashing the community and, and so I thought, wow, that's a really neat perspective. We also had a, a Airbnb manager there who said, look, you name the code, you name the problem, I will enforce it immediately. In fact, he was ahead of the game on a number of the things that really bug us as residents in Cocoa Beach. And so my thought was, and I talked with Robin Hayes about this, and I think a couple other, uh, folks have thought of similar ideas, but why not take the folks who really know and understand what is going to drive the actions and behaviors of the short-term rental folks who are very pro-Cocoa Beach, pro-residents, and they themselves are residents? Bring them in on a temporary council that includes our other residents who are not associated with VRBO, and start putting together ideas and approaches that will impact the short-term rentals and drive their behavior in ways that will actually be responsive to the problems that we're looking at. So I think we have an opportunity here to put together that council and start to develop solutions that really have teeth and take effect.
All right, very good, excellent. Three seconds short of time.
Excellent.
All right, Mr. Compete C, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
All right. Well, I have a lot to say about Airbnbs. Honestly, Airbnbs, there's nothing really that we can do other than regulate them to possibly a higher standard. I, I don't have a problem with Airbnbs, uh, if they're, if they're run correctly, if they're run, um, with the, with the neighbors and their residents in mind. You know, it's their property, they should be able to do what they want, within reason, and also with the, uh, with the, with the mindset that they should be respectful to their neighbors. Um, but that being said, a lot of them aren't, they're, they're not doing what they should be doing, they're not, they're not being respectful, they're creating problems, they're parking all over the sidewalks and the roads, and then, and they're walking in big groups up and down the street and, you know, it, it makes you feel uncomfortable because you're not used to that, right? We're, we're a small community, we're not used to having a hotel in our backyard, which in my opinion is, it's, it's, it's a very concerning thing to me. If you want to have a hotel, it should be in a hotel area. Uh, that being said, we can, we can regulate them more. We, we can, she's, uh, she's very good at coming up with, with ideas and regulations. I, I agree with a lot of what she has said. Um, you know, that, that being said, uh, I don't want to punish them. I don't think that we should create any laws to punish people. I think we should create laws to keep people in line
Halftime.
In order to, to curb their behavior, to, to be respectful to others. So I'm not, I'm not in the, in the mindset of, let's just create, uh, regulations, let's just make more regulations and more regulations to punish people, or let's just charge more fees and more fees. Um, if they're respectful and if they're doing things right, I say, let, let them be respectful and, and do their thing. But if they're not, we really need to, we really need to curb their behavior. Um, I personally, I own, uh, seven rentals myself. They're, they're all long-term rentals. Uh, I choose not to do Airbnb. I don't want to do that to my neighbors. So, uh, that will just tell you right there, I'm not, I'm not for Airbnbs. I like to go to Airbnbs when I go, when I go away, right? So that, that's my whole, so, you know, I retired, uh, two and a half years ago, so I get to travel, I get to do a lot of things. It gives me a lot of time. Uh, but when I go, I'd much rather stay in a, in a house, in an Airbnb. It's nice. Uh, and it, that's the nice thing about Cocoa Beach is you can have people come and they can experience, uh, you know, Cocoa Beach in a, in a normal setting, not a hotel setting. But there has to be regulation, there has to be a balance, there has to be, uh, residents first, there has to be keeping Cocoa Beach, Cocoa Beach. You know, residents matter, all this stuff. This is all, I think, what we all want on this, on this, I don't think
That's time.
Anybody that, that wants anything other than that.
Okay, Ms. Byron, whenever you're ready.
Accountability, accountability, accountability. That's what we need to do with the Airbnbs. Yes, the legislature has dealt us a hand that we can't do anything about, but it isn't completely without aces and wild cards. We can make them register with the city and the state, we can require a fire inspection. We can require that they have all the vehicles in the driveway, not on the streets. We can require that the trash has to be taken out on the right days. We can require them to honor our noise ordinance, which we need to tweak because it's very hard to enforce. Um, so those are the things we can do. As far as punishing, it's not necessarily punishing, it's making you accountable. You are now sitting in the middle of my neighborhood, okay? I can tell you that I've had mariachi on Monday, I've had country and western on Thursday, and then when rap came, that was it. So, yeah, I know what they're talking about because I lived with it and our mayor has lived with it. Um, and it's not that we got caught with our pants down, we didn't. What we thought as a city and as our commissioners is, we have zoning, we have zoned single-family residents, not business, okay? An Airbnb is a business. And you've now just taken the home rule, the citizen's, uh, ability to say, we zoned this to say, we want single-family members
Halftime.
I only want, I only want families here, and now you're sticking a business in the middle of my neighborhood. No, don't like that, don't think that's a good idea. So, yeah, but you know what else comes with accountability and making this work? We have to be able to enforce it. We need enforcement officers. That's why your taxes went up. If you really want to know, and they won't, mine went up, seven dollars and fifty cents.
Wow.
Gee, I could pay, I can do that. I won't go to Starbucks, okay? I won't go to Starbucks, okay? So I, it goes up because we need more enforcement officers. We have one code enforcement. One code enforcement to hit 1,100 Airbnbs, not happening. So we need more, so we're going to hire one and a half more. That's not as many as we need, but it will. We need more EMTs because we have 2.5 million visitors coming to utilize our services. But the thing is, what makes Cocoa Beach different than Vero and go further down, is we have full service. You have a full-service fire company, you have full-service police, you have full-service sewer. All these things we want, that's what we wanted, so that's why we have it. And then the last point is, is the top 10 taxpayers in the city of Cocoa Beach are, nine of them are our hotels. So they're paying taxes and they're going into it. So with these Airbnbs, we're impacting them. So we need to make sure that we work on the Airbnbs and not let them take over neighborhoods, and if they do.
That's time.
Then be responsible and accountable.
All right, thank you very much.
Kenny, we have Skip Williams next.
Hey.
To answer the questions, and then this is the third question, and then hope that the first person can ask a question.
All right, Ms. Williams, whenever you're ready.
The way I understood the question in the beginning is, how as a commissioner would residents matter to you? And it seems to, like, kind of like the phone call game, it kind of changed into nothing but Airbnbs. I've been a commissioner for 15 years, and 15 years before that, I was the chairman of the Waterways and Wildlife Advisory Board. I've lived on the water, on this Indian River, or the Banana River, directly, all but three years of my life. I've seen the best of this river, I've seen the worst of this river. And I went there for 15 years and beat my head against the wall trying to do the things that are now in vogue, dredging canals, you know, keeping channels clear, you know, keeping debris out of the gutters and out of the canals, you know, demucking, all that. And I mean, I think I was successful against the commission for the residents and the people that lived on the water, to the tune of about $80,000. It was like $40,000 one time and then like $40-some-thousand another time to dredge the 200 and the 400 channel. That's about all I got out of 15 years. So I said, you know, residents matter here, and I decided to run for commission. And I put out my, drew out my sign, you know, the top third of it says, "Residents matter," and put my name on it and a couple other words, and I caught all kinds of flack from all the political wizards. They're going, "Hey, nobody's reading anything but residents matter. You've got to get your name out there, you've got to get your name out there." But that is my message, that residents matter. And it matters to me, you wouldn't know in 15 years, the plethora of little things where people call me on my home phone or send me an email, and it's a simple solution. I call the city manager, she says either she'll take care of it, or I can talk to one of the directors and work them on my own. You know, things like the new ramps to the beach that are handicapped accessible, where we had two in the city when I started. Now there's quite a few, and we're going to add some handicap parking spots to some of the new ones that we've put in place. You know, lots of little things that I've done over the years for the residents individually. And then in a holistic standpoint, and every decision I make on the commission, it's based on myself as a resident and what would you all, the voters, the people that live here, the people that put us in office, want to do about that situation. And I like to be able to work those issues for you so you guys don't have to worry about it so much. And I think it's been working out pretty good so far. And they put in term limits because, you know, I can't have good-looking people like me forever. So this will be my last term, and I'd love your support and your vote to do it again.
That's time. All right.
Okay, so that concludes the end of our second question, which seems to have been involved about what they're going to do for the residents, is control vacation rentals in the neighborhoods. The last question has to do with the two referendums that the city commission put on the ballot that have to do with the 5-0 vote, height, density, intensity, and vacating or giving away city property. So with given that, let's start with Skip, and then we'll move to his left.
All right, Mr. Williams, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Okay, so, again, you know, there's people saying, and the person that brought this onto the ballot actually resigned as a commissioner, and his last hurrah was, Skip's the tyranny of one, he won't vote for increasing height and density in certain situations that don't make sense, so we had to put something on the ballot to reduce it to a 4-1, okay? And it's democratic to put it on the ballot for you all to vote on it, okay? But they think it's undemocratic to have to have a unanimous vote to change height and density or to vacate city property. But it was voted on four times, three times in the early 2000s. It was challenged in court every time by the people that wanted to be able to build bigger, better, whatever, make more money. And the final time that it went through, thanks to our mayor at the time, Jana Scott, it passed the courts and it got put on the ballot by a democratic process to be a 5-0 vote, okay? Four years ago, we voted to, you know, we put on the ballot for people to vote, could we raise the 45-foot height limit to be measured from base flood elevation versus the crown of the road, and to be able to have 10 feet of non-occupiable structure on the top for stairwells, elevators, air conditioners, and those kind of things. The people voted for that. It went to you, and you guys decided. I mean, it was, you know, it wasn't.
Halftime.
It wasn't, you know, overwhelmingly for or overwhelmingly the vote was against. It was kind of closed, but it passed. That's democratic process. My feeling is, we don't need referendum one or referendum two to pass. If we want to change height and density in a substantial way, or vacate major tracks of city property, it needs to be, we can wait. Every two-year cycle, we have an opportunity for those referendums out there. If we want to raise height and density, put it out there on the ballot and let the citizens and the voters and the residents decide whether we should raise the height and density, and not leave it up. I don't even think the 5-0 vote by the commission is good enough. I think it should always have to go back to the people that vote, because it's changing their city. And I'll continue to be the tyranny of one if they try to change height and density citywide, and I get reelected if referendum one and two doesn't pass. But if you want it, uncontrolled height and density by four people on the commission, then vote yes on one and two.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Williams. And passing to his left, we'll start with Mr. Hutchinson next.
So I pulled this, or tossed this grenade in the crowd, my last question, but I'll continue on this side. I am happy to be that number-one vote again, which you're talking about, to usurp the vote or on the 4-1 threshold, but I'm voting no. I think it's a great idea. If we want to put on popular vote every two years, that's fine. I think it gets mixed up, the 4-1 threshold gets mixed up that, oh, you're anti-development. And that's not true at all, because the example I'm using is Thursday night, Skip and his team, they led a negotiation to get, it was a 5-0 vote, that got a major development between that hospital and Sunset Cafe on 520. So that's all proof. So that shows that the process works. We don't have to go lowering the threshold to 4-1, because that, to me, is going to open up the floodgates to be able to do not the controlled growth that we want to manage, I think. But if we do it every two years, that's a great idea. We want to, someone's got to sponsor it, put it on the ballot, but I'm absolutely against it, and you can, every single thing that I put on the website, every form I've answered to, I've always said no. So there's no flip-flop for me. It's always been, I'm voting no, and we'll see what the demographics vote for on the popular vote. Thank you.
All right. You've only have taken up one minute, do you have anything else to say?
That's good.
All right, excellent, just making sure we're not shortchanging you. Mr. Hayes, when you're ready, you may begin.
I would be for voting approval of it, but never to increase the heights that we have now, you know, where they can go up that extra few feet. And simply because it, I don't like seeing buildings as a builder with flat roofs. If a man, you know, the density's going to stay in place, and that's the density. But if he wants to add a little architectural value to it, and the safety reasons for farming can get up to a stairway to a roof, I think that's all good. But raising it any more than that, no, I would never approve that. I also would strongly support whatever the voters vote for this coming November. The referendum as far as giving away land, you know, it's fundamentally, at least the way I was raised, that nothing really should be 100%. The only thing that I could, I've been trying to think of, what is 100% vote? And I think the United Nations Security Council, you know, has a voting where it takes all the major five nations, or first four nations, 100%. So that's kind of a hard threshold. Being on the Board of Adjustment, we've always had 4-1, a supermajority, the passive variance and all, and I think that's good enough to handle it. We've been doing pretty good. And just as long as we don't raise it anything more. And, oh, one thing I forgot to bring it out, the one, I've done a couple of developments, the one at the end of Minuteman, the turning into the golf course, I lived there, it was zoned for a three-story, 22-unit condominium. Instead, I went through a project and I did 16 single-family homes. It took me over two years to get it through all the boards.
Halftime.
To get it through all the boards, and I'm down to where now I only have two lots left. And I also protected myself down there in 2004, when I did the deed restrictions. I put in there that those homes would never have commercial rentals, they were basically single-family, and I wish all the subventions did. And I had one homeowner try doing an Airbnb, and it was immediately stopped because of that provision. So, you know, both of the, whatever the citizens want, I strongly promise that I will agree with the citizens and vote for it this coming November. Thank you.
All right, sir, and you've only used up two minutes out of your three?
That's okay.
Okay, just checking to make sure we're not shortchanging any of our candidates. All right, so moving back this direction, Mr. Jackson, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
All right. I have talked with a lot of folks about this, and I see both sides. The concern of keeping it a 5-0 is that one person, and it can be any of the five, doesn't have to be one, a specific one, can keep four others who are of like-minded moving in a direction. And on certain issues, I think that can be a problem. Being on the Board of Adjustments or part of the Board of Adjustments, there are times when a single issue, and I think the 4-0 makes a lot of sense. One individual property doesn't set precedence for any other property, and there are times where a specific issue should have a 4-1 vote. What differentiates the issues that should have a 4-1 from the issues that I think should have a 5-0? I think reversibility. So when we start changing the charter, we start changing fundamental documents associated with what governs and determines what we are as a city, I think that's a big deal. And when you make those changes, you have a lot of irreversibility associated with that. There are budget decisions we can make that are 4-0. You change the budget this year, you can vote to correct it next year if that was a mistake. If we find in the experience and the effect of that decision that that was not the direction we want to go in, reverse that. But setting the highest threshold on those non-reversible city-changing decisions, I still believe is an imperative. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You've only used about one minute, 30 seconds, do you have anything else to say?
Respecting the crowd's time, I appreciate you guys being here, but I won't overtalk you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Mr. Capitzi, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Yeah, so I'm not one to beat around the bush, I never have been. I give it straight. I think if you're going to beat around the bush on answers, why even answer? So my answer is, no, I'm not going to vote, I'm not going to vote on raising height and density, I'm not going to vote on giving away city property. You know, my understanding, and Skip would know better, is this isn't even a vote for a variance, this is actually a vote for straight-up raising height and density without a variance. So this is something that a lot of people don't understand. This is not just doing, because now we've got a 4-1 vote for raising height and density for variance. This is actually raising it to whatever you want. I don't know the threshold or whatever it is, but this is beyond the 77 feet. And a lot of people don't realize that, and I'm glad I finally got to put that out there, but this is a lot more serious than just five people not agreeing and one person shouldn't be able to sway the vote. This is something that you guys have all voted on year after year after year, you guys don't want to raise height and density. So this is a serious, serious issue. This is an issue where every single one of us should be in absolute agreement because we want to respect the wishes of the residents. Now, if you guys want to vote to, and I'm glad it's on the ballot, because you guys, we should get the opportunity to change our minds now and then, and you guys are able to do that.
Halftime.
We shouldn't do that for you. You guys should do that, and we should implement your guys' regulations. So I'm going to be a no on that. If it passes, then obviously I'll go through with whatever it is, but for me, I have lived here my whole life. I like the small-town feel of Cocoa Beach. That doesn't mean I'm against development, by no means. And as Melissa's pointed out before, I've taken lots of donations. I've raised $8,500 in donations, which is insane. And I've gotten donations from developers, I've gotten donations, and I want to be straight-up, everybody should know, I took donations from pilots, from developers, from business owners, from everybody. I'm going to take your money so that I can win. I don't care where it comes from, okay? I don't care.
He's honest.
You can't buy me. I don't need the money. That's the thing. So if you think that allowing me to get elected, I'm not doing this for a popularity contest. I'm doing this because I want my city to be the best it can be, and I don't want to give away city property. Once we give it away, we're never getting it back. So again, we all need to be 100% in line with, do you guys really think this is the best thing for the residents to give this away? And there's times when I do believe it could be good, and there's times when I'm for going above the normal 45-foot height restriction, it just makes sense.
That's time. All right. Okay, Ms. Byron, whenever you're ready.
I'm ready. First, a fact, you cannot build higher than 70 feet in the city of Cocoa Beach, no matter what. If the referendum passes, if it doesn't pass, you cannot go further higher than 70 feet. That's the term, that's the way it is, and that's what you voted on in 2020, when you said, "We get 10 feet for a wash-through and 10 feet for the appurtenances." So let's not confuse the issue of what the referendum is. You cannot go anywhere you want. I struggle with it because I don't think it's, I don't think it's right for me to tell you what I'm going to do, what I need to hear is what you're going to do, what you want. And I'm all for the referendums going forward, to see exactly what citizens want, and to go ahead and honor what you want, because it has changed. I mean, how many people in this room voted in 22, 2002? That's not half of you. There are other people that moved into the city and have made Cocoa Beach their home. And so we all have a responsibility, I would think, to help, let our neighbors decide what, help decide what's going to be with the city. So whatever you all want, though, is great. As far as putting every decision on a ballot for referendum for you to decide, that's great, except it costs money. It costs money to put things on ballots. And therefore, the 20-elect city commissioner is saying, people who think like you.
Halftime.
That's what you're looking for. You're looking for a citizen, a resident, a neighbor, a friend, who thinks like you and will vote like you. And that's what I'm bringing to the table. I'm a citizen, just like you. I love the city, I grew up in the city, I went to Cocoa Beach High School. I'm the only alumni of Cocoa Beach High School standing up here.
Wow.
And I'm not going to tell you how old I am, because Florida today went ahead and told you. So, but I am, I want to serve the city. I come from a family of service. And being a city commissioner, let me tell you, it's service. It's not for the money. You get $500 a month, that's not a lot of money. You spend a lot of time. You need to have the time, you need to have the energy, you need to have the ability to go through and read and research and spend the time that's necessary to be a good commissioner. You need to be a full-time commissioner. And it's hard, it's hard to have a full-time job and be a full-time commissioner. I know, I watch our commissioners go through it. But you still, you as a citizen should require that. You know, we're coming forward because we want to serve, I want to serve, so I would like to be your commissioner. I'm not going to always have everything you want, but I'm sure as heck going to try to do exactly what you've asked me to do, to continue to keep the lifestyle on Cocoa Beach. We're not going to be a Daytona, we're not going to be a Boca Raton, we never will. We have no property for that.
That's time.
So vote for me on November 8th.
Can I make a final comment?
We're going to have a concluding remark.
Yeah.
Okay, can I ask Mike to step out and then?
You'll have two minutes to give a concluding statement with all the other candidates.
It's just timely, the way that, Mike, can you just step up here for one minute? Two minutes?
Yes, you'll all have two minutes to give a closing statement.
Just before you make your concluding remark, I just wanted to say something that I admitted, which you've been able to read, is Melissa and Keith in seat two are filling a vacant seat, that's why their terms are two years. Their terms generally four, and the other candidates, when they're elected, will also be four years. So given that, if you would make, you have two minutes to make your concluding remark.
All right, Mr. Williams, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Okay, back to referendum one and two. Do not be misled, candidate Byron may have it a little off in her mind when she says even if it passes, the height limit's going to stay 70 feet because it's in the charter. Five commissioners right now can change that charter to raise that height limit to stone wood without it ever going back to you on the ballot. If 4-1 passes, then it means four commissioners can change that charter without it ever going back to the ballot. So don't be misled that if you vote yes on those, that the height limit will never go over 70 feet, because that's in the charter, because you're voting to support the charter. As far as the cost to put referendums on the ballot, it's $135 apiece to the supervisors of elections office. it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars apiece to the supervisors of Elections Office to put those on.
Halftime.
That's two hundred and seventy dollars for those two referendums to give you all the opportunity to vote. So yeah, you'll say, well, the lawyers have to craft the language, and we're having a commission meeting, and the commissioner's got to help formulate the language. We're getting paid. We don't get extra for that. And our lawyer is on pure salary, doesn't get anything extra for anything extra she does. So I'm all for letting you guys, the voters, residents, citizens, businesses, whoever owns property in Cocoa Beach, make the big decisions.
All right, and you still have about thirty seconds left. Are you sure you're finished with your closing statement, sir?
Have a beautiful afternoon when you get out of here.
All right, thank you.
Find something more fun to do.
Excellent ending. All right, and who are we going with next? Shall we start on the end and just move our way down? Okay, Mr. Capitzi, whenever you're ready, you may begin. Two minutes.
I don't think it really was a question, right? It's just a closing, okay. Well, I think I pretty much stated what I believe. You know, I'm just a normal guy. I'm just like you guys. I grew up here my whole life. So I want to keep Cocoa Beach, Cocoa Beach. That's my tagline. You know, I believe with my background in finances and all that that I can help assist, come up and come up with ideas for us to make money for the city without raising taxes and without having to down to bigger development. So you know, that's just me in a nutshell. I love this town. I grew up here. My daughter is ten years old. And I'm worried that someday, how is she going to grow up and be able to afford a place here of her own? How is she going to buy here? So we need to, in closing, we need to get a hold of all these Airbnb problems. We need to figure out a way to regulate them so that they could be more respectful to their neighbors. That's a very important thing to me. We need to keep our budget under control. And I think there's ways that we can come up with better opportunities to increase revenues for the city without putting us further in debt, take better care of our parks and our roadways. Just the perspective of Cocoa Beach, I believe, just needs to be a little bit more cleaned up. And I think we can do that. And actually, you had mentioned something before, and I probably won't get to it, but the CRA fund, I believe that we've misused some of that CRA fund. And I would like to see that go to actual blighted areas in the city rather than just...
That's time. Okay, Ms. Byron, whenever you're ready.
Okay, there's a lot to unpack here. CRA has not misspent any of their money. I was director of CRA for eight years. There is laws that we have to run by. We also have, and Skip can confirm this, the city paid two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars to do a study to make sure that we could open a CRA and we could collect the tax in it. So it has been used to build a parking garage. It has been used to give grants to small businesses, and it's cleaned up the downtown. It did the Minuteman Streetscape. It had part of that. Where you, you know, everyone thought that was a beautification, that was for store art. So CRA is in great shape. It's wonderful. I was glad to turn it over. And I'm thrilled to have the Coastal of Ring space, which was my idea. It's going to be in front of the new city hall. It's wonderful. There's a lot of things that are going on in our city. There are a lot of things going on.
Halftime.
We are a beach town that also is a tourist attraction. And we've done a pretty good job of mending them together. Yeah, we have to put up with the traffic, and yeah, we have to put up with the beach. We have to put up with the trash, which we have gotten a handle on by hiring, the city by hiring, the cleanup. So the beaches are better than they were, God, ten years ago. It was a trash, but now it's better. I want to continue moving forward. I want to bring in families. I want to see more families. So our schools are populated, and we don't get threatened with. We're going to close one of our elementarys because we don't have enough population. There's only two-hundred-and-eighty kids at Roosevelt. So we need to promote families to come here. We need to get these engineers that are coming with their families for the space launches. We're going to be more space launches than any of us have ever imagined would happen. That brings tourists. That brings money. That brings, it brings commerce. So please vote for me on November eighth. I'm a citizen just like you, and I care.
All right, thank you very much.
Josh, I think you should go next. I'm going.
Mr. Jackson, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
All right, so a couple points. One, we live here. We love here. My wife and I are involved, Board of Adjustments, cheer coach at the high school. Our boys go to the schools. We love this community. We have seen what can happen in a community where residents, where the community, the people, the lives that are lived here are not a priority. We watched that happen in Myrtle Beach, and we'll fight hard, on the commission or off the commission, wherever we're going to be, to keep Cocoa Beach a hometown beach community. We want to raise our voice here, and we want to protect that because we think that's important. In terms of skills and abilities, bringing a passion for the community, but then also skills and experience in program management, in taking competing priorities, conflicting requirements, and turning them into a plan that moves us forward that a team of folks, you've got a commission, it's a team, can move forward with, can communicate around, and can make decisions on. And we're not always going to agree on everything, and in fact, that's good. That tension, that pull, is what is going to get us close to the right answer, and I value that. And I think I would work very well on the commission. You understand my priorities. You know my goals. I think my fresh approach and experience would be valuable, and I offer it to the community. Thank you so much. Vote Joshua Jackson.
All right, and you still have about thirty seconds left, so.
I would provide the same endorsement as my peer. Enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you for spending time here. Enjoy your city.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Wolferson, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
All right, so we've heard a lot of great conversation here. Like I said, this is the core grassroots of democracy. So I love the fact that there's two choices for every seat. You guys have the option. A lot like Josh, I'm offering a fresh idea. I have no background in politics. I'm a problem solver. Fiscally conservative, problem solver. So there's a lot of hot-button topics. We agree, I think unanimously, on the Airbnb. I think the referendum piece may be a differentiator. But I think as a great example, Josh's lovely wife managed a tailgate party last night at a football game. So I haven't been to a football game, a high school football game, in thirty years. That's a whole one. We took our motorhome down there. It was just a great, a family, community setup. I hope it grows every year, but that's the kind of community I want to maintain, this Cocoa Beach. I promise I'll be a problem solver. It'll be fiscally conscious, fiscally conservative. So head for five. I appreciate it. If you don't like my ideas, know that I have two black labs. I see my terms.
All right. Okay, you've probably taken the least amount of time of anyone else. Anything else you would like to say?
I want to go to the beach.
Now that's a Cocoa Beach sentence. All right, Mr. Haynes.
Yeah, I'm going to walk neighborhoods this afternoon with my grandchildren. But anyways, like I said, the city's doing great. I'd like to see us try and beautify it a little bit more, especially when you're coming from the ends, cleaning up the landscaping and all. We have the power to do that, or incentivize people to do it. That, along with the Airbnbs, I think just let that work in another year, some of the new regulations. And I think it's going to solve itself, and that's probably the biggest problem we have in the city right now. Life safety, we're doing good. I continue doing, promote the police and fire. But also the budgets, we've got a good city. We've got a lot of money coming in. I know we spend money, but that's okay. I want to really concentrate on building a beautiful city hall. Being on the Board of Adjustments for twenty-three years, I'm used to making good, tough decisions. And I must be doing a good job because I've gone through, I think, five commissioners have reappointed me to that board. And that's been, next week's going to be a very sad week for me. It'll be my last meeting, and it is only one little case. But hopefully, I'll be able to serve you all as well as I've served you on the Board of Adjustment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You've still got about a minute left. Anything else to say?
Oh, if you'd like to ask me anything, go on my website. Feel free. I take phone calls from my customer at midnight. Call me anytime, and I'm going. You'll probably want to hang up after a while.
All right, thank you very much, candidates.
Well, I think these candidates did a great job, and they deserve a round of applause. Are there any questions, brief questions, that haven't been answered from a candidate that anybody in the audience wants to ask?
This isn't a question, but I want to thank you for putting this together.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Would you like to ask a question?
Well, I am a newbie in Cocoa Beach. I moved here in nineteen ninety-eight. But I have a couple comments. When I moved here, and you can go on dot gov and look it up, the taxes per person, per resident, were among the lowest on the East Coast of Florida, okay? Now, because of the spending that we have done and the continued up and up and up and up budget, it's among the highest on the East Coast of Florida, okay? And I'm sick of it. I don't want to see it anymore. I want to see people that are responsible to us. If all this development and all this stuff had worked, we should be, our taxes should have gone down. There's only eleven thousand of us here, okay? So I'm putting that gauntlet out. Another thing that I would say is that, and maybe I can puff for a minute because I'm not running, but I see all these projects, and I've gone down, I've gone to review meetings. They always talk about the cost of a project. They never talk about what it does to the budget. All these big buildings that's going to have to be maintained, and all that goes into the budget, comes out of our taxes. So think about that when you're making a decision on commissioners. The other thing I want to say is that the last budget increase in the period that we're in where everybody's struggling, the only commissioner who voted against the sixteen-point-eight percent was Skip Williams. And I want to say, with all due respect, Josh,
Oh, you're, no.
Skip Williams has been fighting for us ever since he's been there. And there's been a lot of 4-1 votes, just like the budget this past year. And I want to thank Skip for his service and for always having our back.
Thank you.
I'm Rick Anderson, eighteen-hundred Minute Men causeway. And one subject I would like to here address that wasn't even talked on was the condition of our downtown. I think that if anybody goes to downtown Melbourne or downtown Dunedin or many of these other downtowns, anywhere in the state and anywhere in the country, our downtown needs, to put it mildly, a facelift. And I would like to, and it just, there seem to be a lot of competing interests within the downtown rather than some, than a coherent plan with a vision that we're all in this together and let's make our downtown something that we can be proud of, which honestly, it is not at this point. I'd like to know if anybody has any comments on that.
Yes, Josh?
Sure. Agree with you. I think it is an imperative on a city and property owners to continue to maintain and upgrade their properties. Our houses are the same thing. The sun, the salt, time and technology, those things wreak havoc. If you've got, anybody's got an AC heat exchanger outside that's lasted longer than five or seven years, you know that we have got to invest, and we've got to get ahead of it. You can't wait till your AC goes out to go ahead and fix it. The same thing applies to a city. You've got buildings. You've got utilities. You've got all these things. We need to know where we want to go, and we need to take prioritized steps to get there. And so can you revitalize the whole thing all at once? No. But you can prioritize and put together a roadmap and a plan of what you want to invest in first, where you want to take action. And I think doing that, having that vision, allows us to start getting ahead of the forces that would drive us into a decay or disrepair.
Just because this is a matter of public record, you're okay, Mike. I'm the representative from the City Commission on Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization. This is all public record, so I'm allowed to talk in front of Mr. Miller. And they had a complete streets program put on by the Florida Department of Transportation. I was able to prioritize the Minuteman improvements, the Streetscape, all that beautification, which we also added some city funding to increase the stormwater capacity in that area. And that was fully funded by FDOT, unless the part we had to put in for the planning permit. So that was a big step into beautifying downtown. I think anybody that has seen it before would agree. And Rick, were you here before we did Minuteman?
I got here just when they started tearing it up.
Okay, all right. Well, everybody would agree that it's a lot better than it was, okay? Also, we had a Main Street program that we, as City Commission, again, public record, sponsored it, turned it like fifty thousand dollars a year, gave them a little place, a little office. And they were working to pull all the businesses together to work through the Main Street program, which is a country, nationwide, I think it's actually partially worldwide program, to try to use all their collective information and things that worked and didn't work around the world and around the cities in the country to try to get those businesses to come together for improvements. And we didn't get as much bang as we thought we would out of that. The CRA, we did that and funded it. We stuck our necks out for two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. And we way more than got our money back for that. Like candidate Byron said, the garage is paying for itself. But the reason we built that garage was to improve the downtown because I don't know if any of you guys remember when Beachhold was there. It was a little hamburger place. They had good hamburgers. But they only had three tables, and they had room for five more. But the requirement was you could only have so many tables for how many parking places you had, and they only had two parking places. So they could only have three tables. So we built the parking garage, and we alleviated that parking requirement of, you know, two spaces per three tables or something like that so that those businesses could have a potential to make more money and serve more people. All the businesses downtown, not just that one. So all those restaurants got relieved, and all the businesses got relieved of their parking requirements. So that was an improvement in the downtown that's kind of unforeseen. You know, you may not realize that, so that's why I'm pointing it out. And like I said, that's all against public record.
There is a plan, Mr. Anderson. It's a vision plan for the CRA, but it's like a twenty-year plan. It's something that, it takes a lot of money to do. Minuteman Streetscape was over four million dollars. So to do some of the things requires a lot more money than we have set aside for. But the improvements that have been made from then, you had rentals of retail space downtown that was like six dollars, and now it's up to like eighteen dollars. So that encourages better businesses to come in. We have more commerce downtown. You'll notice that we went into mixed use. So we have mixed use, so you have retail on the bottom, and you have residential on the top. So there is a plan to revitalize. One of the biggest problems with revitalizing downtown is we have A-1A down the middle of our downtown, which is a street that is not controlled by the city of Cocoa Beach. It's an FDOT. It's a state road. So how do we deal with trying to slow the traffic down so they can have, stop and see our downtown? We also need to move out things like a plumbing company. You don't come to a retail resort area that is family-friendly and you go downtown to buy a toilet. I just don't think that's what you do. So we need to make it worthwhile for those businesses to move to industrial area or to an area that is less, you know, commercial, retail, like we want, add to an area that may be cheaper for them to go ahead and sell the toilets. So yeah, we're trying to make that move, and it's being, you know, Heidelberg's got completely redone. Everybody was repainting downtown. Before you came, Mr. Anderson, it was not pretty. So we do have a little bit more compatibility downtown and a little bit more cohesiveness. So it'll take a while.
Do you have codes and designs that people just can't come in and do a five-dollar store, walk in or?
Yeah, we actually do have those in place. Yeah, it's the town center, and that's what it's owned for, town center. And yeah, it's not, I mean, we only have, what, six national?